Okay. Good evening, everyone. I will now call this meeting of the Derry School Board to order. Please join, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we will start with the roll call. If everyone could introduce themselves, name and position, starting from my right. Jane?
Jane Sumart, Business Administrator.
Joe Crawford, Assistant Superintendent.
Austin Garofalo, Superintendent.
Karen Rand, School Board.
Jason McLeod, School Board.
Jen Thoreau, School Board Vice Chair.
Michael Thiel, School Board Chair.
Jenna Paradise, Secretary.
Jamie Carew, School Board.
Kim Conant, Director of Curriculum and Grants.
Laura Powers, Director of Student Services.
Anthony Henry, Pinkerton Academy Representative.
Thank you, everyone. I know most everyone is here tonight to celebrate our retirees, but before we get to that, we have a few items to take care of. Our first item tonight will be the Consent Agenda. For approval, we have adoption of the non-public minutes from May 13, 2025, adoption of the public minutes from May 13, 2025, approval of the manifest in the amount of $1,833,273.2, of which $1,266,273.2 is general payroll, and $566,918.30 is general expense, and approval of the following resignations: Kelly Fitch, Special Education Facilitator, Derry Early Education Program; Molly Warmbein, Speech and Language Pathologist, District. Do I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
First by Jason.
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Resignations. Thanks for all that they've done for our children. Those are two really important people. I know everybody isn't important, but they're roles that are hard to fill.
Yep. All right. We have one administrator nomination we will consider outside of the Consent Agenda tonight. So, Joe, will you be introducing her? Laura?
Hi there. It's with great pleasure, Jonathan is this on? I can't tell. Okay. Back? Oh. Right. It's with great pleasure that I announce a new Assistant Director of Student Services. This is Christina Kaskowitz. She'll be joining us in the next school year. So she'll be starting in July. And I've worked with her at a couple of different districts over the years. We've had cases that have, we've kind of worked together with and have always found her to be wonderful to work with, a great advocate for kids, and I am very excited to have her on my team. I'll let her tell you a little bit about herself.
Hi, I'm Christina Kaskowitz. I am a longtime Derry resident. I grew up going through the schools here, and I currently have my own children going through school here. So I'm super excited to join the district in a professional capacity. I currently work for the Wyndham School District as a special ed building-level director and out-of-district coordinator. I've worked with Wyndham for eight years. In my administrative career, I worked for Salem as an administrator and a special ed coordinator. So I have experience with special ed grades pre-K through transition adulthood. And I currently am excited to learn a lot from Laura as the Director in terms of some of the pieces that I may not work, may not do at the building level in regards to grants and funding and all of those types of pieces, as well as to get into the buildings and advocate and support for the students.
All right, thank you, Christina. You have an impressive resume for this position. You're a lifelong Derry resident, right? And you come highly recommended from one of your former colleagues that I happen to be married to. So I think we're lucky to be bringing you on for this position. Did anyone have any questions for Christina?
I want to welcome Christina. She said something about now that you're leaving, I'm finally coming on board. So if that's what it takes to get a great person like her onto our administrative staff, then it's well worth it. When I was the Work to Learn Coordinator at Pinkerton Academy, Circle of Friends Daycare, I remember her running around many, many, back in the 90s. And she has come a long way, and we're very excited to have her on board.
Thank you.
All right. If nobody has any more questions, I will take a motion to accept the nomination of Christina Kaskowitz for the position of Assistant Director of Student Services.
Second.
First by Brenda, second by Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the celebration of our retirees. Before we begin, I'd just like to thank all of you for the dedication throughout your long careers. You know, retiring from teaching or from education in any capacity, it's more than just a job. You guys have made countless connections with your students, with your colleagues throughout the years. It takes a special person to do this, and we've been lucky to have so many special people here for so many years. It's an incredibly difficult job, but it can be incredibly rewarding. There's nothing I can say to truly show our appreciation for all you've done for our children throughout the years, except thank you. I'm sure your impact will continue to be felt here in Derry for years to come through the students and colleagues you've mentored and influenced. So we have a few of our retirees that weren't able to be with us tonight, so I'm going to read their biographies before we form our receiving line. So first of all, Kim Carpentino. Kim began her career in Derry in 2005 as Assistant Principal at Gilbert-Achood Middle School. She came to us with several years of experience working in the Hudson School District, where she gained valuable experience as both a teacher and behavior specialist. Her dedication to the district, staff, and students made her promotion to Principal of East Derry Memorial Elementary School in 2012 a seamless transition. In July of 2020, Kim became the Principal of Gilbert-Achood Middle School. She remained in that position until July of 2024, when she came to work in the Central Office as Coordinator of Student Safety. In this role, we continue to draw on her strengths of planning, programming, consultation, and collaboration. She is an impressive leader who is always looking for the next challenge. This is evident in not only her personal educational pursuits, but in her willingness to take on difficult tasks. She is well-respected by her colleagues within the Derry School District, as well as at the state level, where she has served as the President of the New Hampshire Principals Association. Thank you for your many years of dedicated service, and best wishes in your retirement. All right, we have a few other, well, actually, first, before I move on, Kim wrote a letter that she wanted me to read into the record at tonight's meeting. Dear members of the Derry School Board and the Derry Cooperative School District, thank you for 20 incredible years of service and partnership. I have had the privilege of serving as the Principal for both staff and students at two amazing schools, East Derry and Gilbert-Achood. My career here has been fulfilling and inspiring. While there have certainly been challenges along the way, the countless moments of growth, achievement, and connection with students and colleagues stand out most to me. Derry has truly been my second family and will always hold a special place in my heart. Although I am, this being a principal, I am deeply grateful for the opportunity to take on a new role supporting a systematic behavioral approach across all six schools as the Coordinator of Student Safety. This position has brought me closer to students, paraprofessionals, and teachers in meaningful ways and has allowed me to collaborate with some of the most skilled educators. I've learned so much this year from them and have been continually inspired by the professionalism and compassion of Derry's administrators, teachers, and paraprofessionals with whom I have had the privilege to work in my new position. As I transition into retirement, I feel immense pride in all that we've achieved this year. I am disappointed that I cannot attend the School Board Celebration tonight. I typically attend each year, but ironically, I can't participate in the year I am retiring. I have an event that was scheduled for me back in January. I wish everyone in Derry a future that is exciting, peaceful, and filled with success. Warmly, Kim Carpentino, Coordinator of Student Safety. These are all the ones that are not here tonight. All right. Next is Lynn Van Assi. Lynn was hired in November of 1999 as a one-on-one aide at South Range. In 2008, she became a kindergarten educational assistant. Lynn is a dedicated professional and a valued member of the South Range team. She is a true team player who steps into various roles when called upon. She has expanded her role to also fill in as a special education assistant in various classrooms. She shows genuine care for her students and their success. Thank you for your years of service to the Derry Cooperative School District. The students and staff will miss your warm and nurturing personality. Best wishes in your well-deserved retirement. Next up is Deborah Richardson. Deb started as a food service floater in 2003. In January of 2004, she accepted a permanent cook/server position at Dairy Village. In 2007, she transferred to Barca as a cook/server. She stayed at Barca, where she thrived and eventually became the head cook in 2011. In 2019, she moved to Gilbert-Achood as the head cook and has been in this position for the remainder of her career. Deb is a very dependable, hard worker. She is always willing to learn new things and help wherever needed. She has a wonderful rapport with the students and staff and always has a smile on her face. Thank you for your many years of dedicated service. We will miss you. Best wishes in your retirement. Next up is Linda Johnson. Linda started in Derry in August of 2017 as a reading specialist, special ed teacher at Ernest P. Barca Elementary School. She has remained in this position for her entire career with the district. From the moment Linda started working with the students, we knew she was going to be a wonderful asset to the district. Her enthusiasm and love of teaching is apparent in everything she does from her classroom setup, lesson planning, and her ability to meet and engage with each student where they are at in their learning. Linda takes the time to develop a great understanding of her students and what they need to be successful in reading, as well as when they go back to the classroom. Linda is very organized and well-prepared for each lesson. The students come to her class excited to learn. Thank you for your years of dedicated service. We wish you all the best in retirement. All right. Nancy Connolly. Nancy began her career in Derry as a food service employee, administrative assistant at Dairy Village in September of 1996. She remained in this position through 2004. She was an excellent cashier who always had a smile on her face, and the children all enjoyed seeing her on a daily basis. In July of 2005, she became the Kitchen Manister at Ernest P. Barca. Her work ethic, engaging personality, and desire to help wherever needed are a few of the reasons she is such a valuable asset to the district. In 2017, she became the Kitchen Manager for Gilbert-Achood, Ernest P. Barca, and Grinnell. Nancy is known for her kind and caring attitude. She is a team player who is always willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done. We will certainly miss her and wish her much happiness in her retirement. Next up is Dora De Julio. Dora started with the district in January of 1998 as a special ed assistant at Grinnell. She worked at Grinnell until she transferred to our Early Education Program in 2006. In 2007, she transferred to West Running Brook, where she has remained for the last 19 years. Dora has always displayed a very strong work ethic and is very dependable. She cares deeply for the students she works with. Her kind personality and calm demeanor creates a safe learning experience for her students. She is a great communicator and team player and has been an integral part of the special education team for the last 28 years. Thank you for your years of dedicated service. You will be missed. Best of luck in your retirement. All right. One last one who is not with us tonight, Susan Hebert. Sue became her, Sue began her career in Derry in August of 2001 as a Special Education Secretary in the SAU office. Sue obtained a Bachelor's in Education from the University of New Hampshire. She came to us with several years of administrative experience with a background in sales and marketing, technical instruction, as well as scheduling and production positions. Her varied background has enabled her to jump in and help wherever needed. Sue is a dedicated team player who has filled many roles for us in the district. In addition to her administrative role in the Special Education Department, she has served as treasurer. Sue is known for her work ethic, attention to detail, and sense of humor. She has been a loyal member of the Central Office for many years, and the office will not be the same without her. Wishing you much happiness in your well-deserved retirement. All right. Now, if everyone can take their position in the receiving line, we'll move on to everyone who is here tonight. All right. First up is going to be Tracy Graham. Tracy began her, go ahead. All right. Tracy began her career in 1995 at the Gilbert-Achood School as a Computer Study Skills teacher. In 1998, she became a Technology Specialist for the district. Her primary responsibilities have been server management, district website development and maintenance, and internet and network maintenance. Tracy came to us with several years of experience as a principal software engineer for Wang Laboratories, as well as computer science degrees from both BU and Duke. She is a dedicated, hard-working individual with a wealth of knowledge, and we have been lucky to have her on our team for the last 30 years. During her tenure, Tracy has seen many system changes, upgrades, and the implementation of various hardware and software systems. She has met each challenge with the utmost professionalism and adaptability. Tracy performs admirably during tense situations. She regularly volunteers her expertise to all projects. We can't thank you enough for your years of dedicated service. You will be missed. Best wishes for a long and relaxing retirement. Now, I meant to do Austin first, so he could assume his position over there. So you come over and we'll get it taken care of. All right. Austin began his career. Austin began his career in Derry in July of 2004 as an Assistant Principal at Gilbert-Achood Middle School. In July of 2005, he became the Principal and remained in this role through September of 2017. At the time, we were in a transition period, and Austin was tasked with refocusing staff on student achievement and creating and sustaining parent involvement. From the moment he stepped into the role of Principal, his energy and enthusiasm for the success of the Gilbert-Achood community was evident. He quickly energized the community toward a common goal. Always looking for a new challenge, in September of 2017, Austin took on the duties of interim Assistant Superintendent. In July of 2018, he became a permanent member of the Central Office when he accepted the role of Assistant Superintendent. He remained in this role until he became the Superintendent in July of 2022. When colleagues were asked how they would describe Austin, these are a few of the responses we got. Larger-than-life, compassionate, down-to-earth, funny, the most authentic person I have ever met. He is a great boss who genuinely cares about the people he serves. Dedicated and loyal to the students, teachers, staff, and families in Derry. Thank you for your many years of dedicated service, and best wishes in your retirement. For everyone else, why don't we have you do the handshakes and then circle back for the gifts, so you're not struggling with the box? Too late. All right. Yvonne Harding. Yvonne started. Yvonne started with the Derry Cooperative School District in July of 2005 as a part-time data information specialist. She remained in this role until she transferred over to the Derry Early Education Program as a School Secretary in July of 2007. A team player, always willing to help where she was most needed, in July of 2011, Yvonne transferred over to South Range Elementary School as a secretary. She quickly became a valuable member of the office team, known for her positive, friendly, outgoing personality and calming demeanor. In July of 2023, she was recruited to come over to the Central Office when one of the administrative assistants for the Special Education Department retired. Thank you for your many years of dedicated service to the Derry School District. We will miss your smiling face. Best wishes for a long and happy retirement. This is set up the same way every year, and we have the same problem every year. All right. Next up is Kathy Kennedy. Kathy started with the Derry Cooperative School District as the Director of Human Resources in July of 2003 and has remained in this role for her entire career with the district. It is hard to summarize her impact in just a few minutes. She has always been behind the scenes, ensuring our schools were staffed, that we have the right benefits in place, and watching out for our health with her engaging wellness challenges. She has navigated countless hiring seasons, managed crises, and guided us through leadership transitions. All of this has been accomplished while simultaneously raising three boys and continuing her education to keep up with the ever-changing updates to labor law compliance. Thank you for being a trusted advisor and friendly, compassionate colleague throughout the years. We will miss you and your wealth of knowledge. Best wishes for a long and happy retirement. Next up will be Sue Linehan. Sue came to us with an extensive background in pediatric nursing in a hospital setting. She began her career in Derry in August of 2005 as a nurse at the Derry Early Education Program. Prior to accepting this position, she volunteered in the nurse's office at South Range School. In 2007, Sue transferred from Deep to South Range, where she has remained for the remainder of her career with the district. Sue's accomplishments include standardizing and computerizing all individual health plans, screening students for vision and hearing issues, instituting a Be Safe program, where she tracks student injuries to understand where most injuries occur to improve safety within the school setting, spearheaded a new wellness initiative, and was a nurse-team leader. Sue is a true leader and a great resource for all of the nurses in the district. We will miss you. Best wishes in your retirement. Next up will be Wendy Mahoney. Wendy started her career in the Derry School District in 1999 as a Title I Reading Assistant at the Charles M. Floyd School. In 2000, she accepted a position as a Grade II teacher at Floyd. In 2005, she transferred to Barca and has been there for the remainder of her career. Wendy taught third grade at Barca from 2005 to 2012. In 2013, she became a reading specialist. Wendy is a dedicated professional who is very organized and takes great care to prepare very thought-out and engaging lesson plans. She is a conscientious, dedicated professional who has formed strong bonds with staff, students, and families. Wendy is a team player who has always had an active role as teacher representative with the PTA. Wendy is always willing to share her expertise and often is a resource for other teachers seeking advice, suggestions, and resources for their students. We will miss her and wish her all the best in her well-deserved retirement. Next up will be Kelly Marafa. Kelly began her career in Derry in March of 2000 as a special ed assistant at West Running Brook Middle School. She enjoyed this role and knew this would become her career path. In August of 2004, she became a special education teacher at West Running Brook, and she has remained in this position for the remainder of her career in Derry. Kelly loves teaching and continually strives to learn how to help each student reach their full potential. She is a great communicator who understands the importance of teamwork and collaboration. Kelly is an advocate for all her students and has worked hard to determine the best teaching techniques so that no student is left behind. She has utilized workstations in her classroom, enabling her to tailor instruction to individual needs and ensure that each student is learning at a comfortable pace. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. We will miss you and wish you all the best in your retirement. Kate began her career as a school nurse in Derry at East Derry Memorial Elementary School in October of 2005, and she has remained in this role for her entire career with us. Kate has been a pillar of support, comfort, and care for our staff and students for the last 20 years. Kate has managed our health office with great efficiency, always greeting all who entered with a big smile, kind words, and quality health care. She is a dedicated member of our community, unwavering in her dedication to comfort students going through a tough time or helping staff with their own health concerns. Thank you for your years of dedication to the East Derry Memorial Community. Best wishes in your retirement. Matt began his career in Derry as a health physical fitness teacher at West Running Brook in September of 1995. In July of 1998, Matt became Assistant Principal at South Range School. He served in this role until he became the principal in July of 2005. He has been the principal of the South Range School for the last two decades. Matt has strong interpersonal skills. He is a good listener and a team player. Matt has been a mentor to many and is constantly striving to develop his own leadership qualities and inspire others. Matt cares deeply about the South Range community. He is always open to input, feedback, and ideas from staff, students, and parents in the community. This relationship building has been instrumental in creating a positive school culture. Best of luck in your well-deserved retirement. You will be missed. Laura Walker started in 2017 as the school nurse at West Running Brook. For almost a decade, she has been a steady, compassionate presence in the school. During her tenure, she has responded to several emergency situations, always addressing the immediate needs while maintaining an environment of calm and control. She is an excellent communicator who understands the importance of keeping families up to date and following up on medical concerns. She played a vital role in keeping our community safe during the challenging COVID years. Thank you for your care and commitment to the Derry School District. We wish you all the best in retirement. Eric started in August of 2005 as a math teacher at Gilbert H. Hood Middle School. He has remained at Gilbert H. Hood for his entire career with the district. Mr. Werner is known for his dependability and work ethic. He has a great rapport with his students and is very positive and encouraging. Mr. Werner works hard at delivering challenging, well-thought-out lessons that keep his students engaged. Thank you for your years of dedicated service to the Derry School District. You will be missed by the staff, students, and colleagues. Best wishes for a long and happy retirement.
All right. Really last this time, Louise Dyce.
Louise began her career in Derry in 2003 as an elementary teacher at the Derry Village School. In 2005, she moved over to Ernest P. Barca Elementary School, where she has spent the remainder of her career with the district. Louise has such a positive attitude and is always ready to pitch in wherever she is needed. She has been involved with the PTA, helped with the After School Kids Club program, and has been a member of our Read Across America Committee and Crisis Intervention Team. She is a dedicated professional who has worked hard at tailoring her teaching to the students' strengths and weaknesses to ensure mastery of the lesson plans. Louise is a team player and a great collaborator. She is well-liked by students, staff, and parents, and we will miss her. Best wishes for a well-deserved retirement.
You didn't know me for that, was what I forgot.
Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight, and I think I probably echo everyone up here when I say we can't thank all of you enough for all of the years, the district, the influence that you've had with students, with your colleagues, with everyone in this room. So again, congratulations to you all. With that, we will take a 15-minute recess.
Kate began her career as a school nurse in Derry at East Derry Memorial Elementary School in October of 2005, and she has remained in this role for her entire career with us. Kate has been a pillar of support, comfort, and care for our staff and students for the last 20 years. Kate has managed our health office with great efficiency, always greeting all who entered with a big smile, kind words, and quality health care. She is a dedicated member of our community, unwavering in her dedication to comfort students going through a tough time or helping staff with their own health concerns. Thank you for your years of dedication to the East Derry Memorial Community. Best wishes in your retirement. Matt began his career in Derry as a health physical fitness teacher at West Running Brook in September of 1995. In July of 1998, Matt became Assistant Principal at South Range School. He served in this role until he became the principal in July of 2005. He has been the principal of the South Range School for the last two decades. Matt has strong interpersonal skills. He is a good listener and a team player. Matt has been a mentor to many and is constantly striving to develop his own leadership qualities Matt cares deeply about the South Range community. He is always open to input, feedback, and ideas from staff, students, and parents in This relationship building has been instrumental in creating a positive school culture. Best of luck in your well-deserved retirement. You will be missed.
Welcome back, everyone. Thank you again to everyone who came out to recognize our retiring staff tonight. We'll continue on with the meeting. Next on the agenda is going to be delegations and individuals. At this time, residents of Derry, parents of currently enrolled Derry students, and employees of the district may address the school board on matters that pertain only to school and district business for a period of time not to exceed three minutes per person. As a reminder, questions cannot be answered in real time. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone at this time and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Richard Tripp, 44 Wyndham Road. A couple of things I want to talk about tonight. I was very impressed with the retirement ceremony. When I retired, all they did was take my badge and kick me out the door. So, this is much more gracious than BAE was. The other thing I want to talk about is, I first ran into Austin when he was principal at Hood. You know, do you remember that?
Yeah.
No, if I tried to chase you down, I would have got you. No, at that time, I was still the commander of the VFW here in Derry. And we always, we have scholastic awards that we give out to the students. And I remember that the student from West Rainbrook that had won the Patriots' Pen, which is the middle school award, hadn't made it to our award ceremony at the post. So, I had to chase the girl down and give her a award. But this was the Patriots' Pen essay contest. And she, like I said, she was the winner for Derry. And as such, she advanced to the district level, which was, I believe there's six posts in the district, and from there goes to state. But, of course, the kids can't get into the contest unless the schools are interested in them participating. So, you know, I know that the current commander, he comes and talks to you guys every year to make sure that, you know, you're still going to allow the students to participate. So, you know, I thank you for that. I thank you for, you know, allowing the VFW to talk with the students and allow them to participate. You know, it's one of these things where everybody, all the students, they get a plaque, and if you're the winner, you get some sort of monetary award. I think if you are the national winner, I believe it's like five or $10,000. So, it's worth, you know, participating and taking some time to write a good essay. So, I don't know. Does the VFW ask teachers to participate in the judging anymore? No? Did you ever participate in the judging? No? Well, maybe next year we'll get you to help with the judging. So, once again, congratulations, Austin. Like I said, I hope you enjoy your retirement. But I hope that you stay busy because that's the key to living a long life, is not sit and watch the grass go. Thank you much.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else?
Good evening. Jonathan Dugan, 5 Village, Brooklyn. I just wanted to take a moment and thank Austin for the many years that you've given to us. I'd like to, I have this written down, and I'm not good at reading, but I don't know, I'd rather do this off the cuff. But anyways, I just want to take a moment to recognize and sincerely thank Dr. Austin Garofalo for steadfast leadership over the last 20 years as superintendent and district leader. From the moment you stepped into the role of superintendent, you faced an immense set of challenges: navigating a district reorganization, the difficult and emotional decision to close a school, and leading the successful passage of the sizable bond that will benefit generations of students to come, as well as countless unsaid things as well that you've had to deal with. These moments weren't easy. They came with tough conversations, competing priorities, and no shortage of emotion. But through it all, you led with an unwavering focus on what would best serve our students, families, and educators, not just today, but for the long term. Do you also want to take a moment to recognize our teachers and staff whose dedication and resilience have anchored this district through every change? Your commitment to our students has remained constant, and we are deeply grateful for all that you do. To Dr. Garofalo, all our retiring educators and staff, thank you for your dedication, your leadership, and your care. You leave behind a stronger district because of your work, and we wish you all the best in this next chapter.
David Clapp, 3 Barkland Drive. I'm not going to try to follow that up, Austin, but I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for this district. Quick, I remember I first got involved in 2020, and I immediately, like, honed in on you during that process through COVID. You were just very straightforward. You don't mess around, and I've always appreciated that about you. But thank you for everything you've done. I really appreciate it. I do have one thing, I know one thing that's, one of the things I really cared about the last three years I was on the board was a legislative meeting. I know you guys are having that coming up. So, I hope, I wish you luck, Jamie, Jenna, and Jason. You know, it's been a tough process, that meeting, you know, but I do wish you luck, and I hope you can try to get through and see what we can do to move forward with school funding and other issues that we face. You know, it hasn't, things have gotten worse, right? You know, special education reductions, adequacy reductions, and those don't seem to be going away, particularly the adequacy. And if you've fallen legislation, which I haven't really that closely, I don't recall any discussions regarding a change in adequacy for this upcoming year. So, what I would do is, I would stress the things that haven't been talked about in prior years and show the trend of it just going further and further away for what we need. And one of the other things, what I would say is, I feel for you guys. The budget process this year for you guys is going to be immensely difficult. And I would, I would say you're probably going to have a really tough time getting on default, which is, seems to be the standard. And, you know, last year was a different animal, where you had the separation of the teacher's contract and the budget. So, I wish you guys well. What I would say is, I would stress, I would go to the meeting prepared and stress key items that you guys want to really highlight since the last time we've met with these guys, you guys met with these guys, I think it was third quarter of '24 or whatever, and really talk about how things have gotten progressively worse. And there's no end in sight, unfortunately. So, I wish you luck. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, we will move on in the agenda, but the comment period will remain open until 7:44 PM. If you wish to make a comment prior to that time, please approach the microphone and wait to be recognized. Next up will be our student member updates. Mr. Henry, you're up with your Pinkerton update.
Well, hello. So, most of my update is going to be dates because we're at the end of the year. It's a lot of events. So, and most of my update next meeting will be pretty much the same thing, but good to just hammer it in, I guess. So, a couple weeks ago, May 17th, junior class had their prom. I was there, and it went very well. Tomorrow, at 6:30, is the instrumental and choral concert at the Stockbridge. On the 29th, which is this Thursday, Open House for prospective students is 5:30 to 7:30. I believe they start in the English Building, so if you're planning on going, start in the English Building. Senior banquet, which is the senior dance, is June 5th from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, and this year it is at Atkinson Country Club. Senior cookout will be 3:00 to 5:00 PM on the quad on June 10th. Senior awards night will be June 12th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Fieldhouse. And graduation for seniors is June 13th, and finals are the 11th through the 16th with 17th makeup day. And that's the rest of the year.
All right. Thanks, Anthony. So, the junior prom went well? All right. Congratulations. I know you were on the committee.
I was on the prom planning committee. It was a lot of work. We had a big budget. It was fun.
Must be nice. All right. Ms. Kyle from Next Charter School is not here tonight, and in fact, I didn't realize it at the time, but the last meeting was probably her last meeting. So, she'll be graduating next Thursday. So, Ms. Kyle, wherever you are, thank you for serving with us and for your updates throughout the year. Congratulations, and good luck to you on your next adventure.
I have a question for you.
Jenna has a question for you.
Hey, I have a quick question for you. Do you know information about the Pinkerton liaison position that is open for next year and auditions, or however they are doing it?
Applications are open now, and they remain open until the 2nd.
All right. Thanks, Anthony. We have nothing to deliberate tonight, so we'll move on to administration reports. Jane, you're up with your business administrator update.
My update is really going to be focused on the capital improvement projects. And starting with updating you on the bond, I've completed the bond application and submitted it to New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, as well as submitted all legal information to bond counsel. The bond sale will be July 16th, and the closing will be between August 6 and 7th, at which time the bond proceeds will be wired to the district. Following with the Grinnell Roof and Gilbert H. Hood roof projects, they were actually out there recently, within the last week or two, doing a pre-site visit. All of those plans were designed. The bid went out, and tech roofing was selected. The project is going to start in June as soon as the school lets out. And West Running Brook, I'm sure all of you noticed the changes here on the property. If you come by West Running Brook, the scaffolding is significantly done around the building. And they will be bringing all of their materials onsite on June 16th, so it'll be the, I believe it's the last day teachers are here. And the demo of the banding around the building will start on June 17th. So that's going to be very exciting when that starts. And so far, we've been very happy with the work that the scaffolding company has done. They've been outstanding, and you may have seen them, they've been doing some after-school, trying to catch up due to the rain, but so far, so good. And we just wanted to put up some progress photos for those who haven't driven by the school, but the scaffolding has now come around to the front of the building. But these were as of last Saturday, or last week. And so we definitely, they are definitely on track to have the project where they are as far as getting the project completed, hopefully prior to school starting. But I think that getting the scaffolding done definitely gave us a head start and was a good move. We do have touch a truck here on June 7th, and we're still going to move forward with this location because it's already planned. The site has been used for quite a few years. I'm on the committee with that event. And so I think we're still going to be able to make it work. And we have a lot of, there's always a lot of volunteers that are there to make sure that, you know, nobody's near the scaffolding or whatever. But so that is the update on the project. The other projects will be starting, really preliminary things over the summer, working with the architects for the doors and window replacement, and working on the, getting the HVAC and exterior for South Range, the design and the plan. The HVAC has actually already been designed, but pulling it all together, and we'd be working on that over the summer and fall, so that that project can start in the spring of 2026. Does anybody have any questions on any of that?
I have a couple of questions for the bond projects. You know, when Mark Jobin came earlier in the year, he had talked about putting together a plan, you know, and a schedule for all of the bond projects, you know, that we would be able to put out to the public. You know, what's the progress on that? Because we haven't seen anything, and that was quite a while ago now.
Sure. And we've been, we've internally had a lot of conversations going with some of our contractors. They're doing pre-construction meetings, and we are scheduling that out. I worked with Mark last week on the cash flow projections for the bond. So I know that he plans on putting out a schedule. I think he was just waiting on some of these pre-construction meetings to have a formal schedule moving forward.
I mean, I think what everyone wants to see is just kind of like a high-level schedule of, you know, over the three-year, you know, expectation of these projects are going to take, when you can expect things to get done. You know, that may change, but I think just high-level estimates of when, you know, each project can be expected to be completed.
I'll make sure we have that for the next board meeting.
My one other question was the unreserved fund balance, retained funds, the facilities projects that you guys are proposing to do out of unreserved funds. Where are we on that? Because I know when we talked about those projects, it seemed like it was pretty urgent to get those approved, so that you could start putting it out to bid, to be able to have them done over the summer.
I am still trying to coordinate a meeting with the finance committee, so that I can bring forward our projected unreserved fund balance, and then it can go to the full board. We still have several things that we're still, you know, we're still getting purchase orders for things, so we're kind of trying to tidy up. And so try to formalize a close year-end projection, which I can have for the week of, you know, we were trying to coordinate schedules for the week of June 2nd, if we can work this week with the finance committee to agree on a date.
All right. Did anybody else have any questions for Jane? All right. So we will move on to Austin and his superintendent's update.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone had a wonderful Memorial Day weekend, in spite of the weather, except, of course, for yesterday. Very exciting to see the sun and feel the warmth. As Anthony mentioned, we're getting to the end of things. We have approximately three weeks left in the 2024-2025 school year. We held kindergarten orientation on Friday, the 16th. I hope everyone with at least one child entering kindergarten in the upcoming school year had an opportunity to visit our elementary schools and are excited to begin their elementary education in the 2025-2026 school year. Over these next three weeks, along with the learning that continues, there are a number of events. On Thursday, June 5th, as Michael mentioned, Opera House in Derry, 4 p.m., largest graduating class from Next Charter School, 17 students. Looking forward to that. The 8th grade promotion, all 8th graders together for the first time here in Derry at 4 p.m. On Wednesday, June 11th, over at the Pinkerton Academy Hackler Gymnasium. I want to congratulate all of our Grade 8 students and wish them all well, whatever their future holds for them. The following day, Thursday, June 12th, is the last day of school for our outstanding educational assistants, as well as for all students from the Derry Early Education Preschool Program, all the way up through Grade 7. I want to wish all of those students and assistants a great summer and hope they will return ready for the 2025-2026 school year. Our wonderful teachers are here for a couple of workshop days on Friday, the 13th, and Monday, the 16th, and then they will enjoy their summer vacation before coming back next year. A lot of our teachers are involved in our special education extended school year program, as well as Title I students. And that will be happening for the four weeks following July 4th, Monday through Thursday in the morning. And we look forward to having those students and teachers here for the summer. Earlier this evening, as you all know, we celebrated a number of retirees. I want to thank Christina LeBelzak and her food service staff for always putting on one of the best food productions of the school year, to say the least. My administrative assistant, Kathleen Holzman, I've never seen more packages and piles on desks and spread around. There is a lot to getting these things put together. Michael, I think you did a great job. I liked that idea of you reading the bios before we get up there for the people that couldn't make it. I want to take a moment to express my gratitude to all of the retirees for their hard work, professionalism, and overall dedication as they all move on to the next chapter in their lives. It has been an honor to be your superintendent. I know each and every one of you will be sorely missed by students, family, and staff. So thank you all, and congratulations.
Got a question. I heard that we had a team-building event where we brought all of our 4th grade classes from the elementary schools together with Adventure Lore. Can you tell us a little bit about that, one of you guys?
Yeah, so today, we had a field trip where all 4th graders from the four elementary schools went to the Boys and Girls Club. Adventure Lore provided some activities. This event was really planned and coordinated by Mitch Edwards, our coordinator of student wellness. He kind of did all the dirty work of putting together an activity like this, of coordinating dates and places and, you know, working with Adventure Lore. I've heard good things through Kim and other people, but I haven't had a chance to speak with any 4th grade teachers or students yet. I'll hopefully get a brief by Mitch tomorrow.
That's cool. I mean, you know, when you guys do good things, you should brag about them.
We should. And I should also mention that this was funded by Title IV, so no district funds were hurt or harmed or used in the making of this event. But again, I can't give enough props out there to Mitch. He really put this whole thing together.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, guys. Next up will be committee reports. So we had one committee meet over the last two weeks, the Communications Committee. Jen, did you have an update from that meeting?
Yeah, this is a new committee that was formed this year, I think with the idea in mind that we're going to be thinking really well about how we communicate some of the wonderful things that the school district is doing. And particularly, our conversation was about communicating around the bond, so there is some overlap there with facilities and what you asked earlier about Jane, making sure that people are understanding when projects are happening and things. Cliff is not here right now. He was here earlier, but he has updated the website to reflect, I think right now, if you log onto the SAU 10 website, you'll see a picture of West Running Brook with the scaffolding that's happening. So he provided us that update the last time he was there, when, he provided that update when he was there with us for that meeting. But really thinking well about how we're going to be talking about these projects moving forward, as well as some of the other wonderful things that are happening in the district, like today's event.
Cool. Yeah, I mean, I think improving communication is something that, you know, we have to think about long-term. You know, we, there's a lot going on in this district, a lot of great things are happening, and, you know, we need to do a better job of making people know, you know, what's going on here, and, you know, and how we do that, you know, and have it be a more coordinated effort. You know, I feel like the way that everything happens now is kind of piecemeal, you know, each school does their thing, and they reach their own community, and it kind of ends there. You know, I think we need to do a better job of a more coordinated effort to communicate everything that's going on in the district and reaching outside of just families of kids in the district.
I would, sorry, Joe. I would absolutely echo that. And I think the committee last, was it last week we met? We also met with the understanding and recognition that we are in a transitional phase right now. We're in a bit of a liminal space. We have Michael Flynn joining us on July 1st. And the agenda tonight highlights, too, that there's a goal-setting meeting for the board on Thursday. So there's a lot of overlap here in what we're going to be tackling in the next several weeks to months.
Yeah, Jen, you actually, that's exactly what I was going to say, is I think we're, this is an exciting time, but getting Mike on board and helping kind of guide what that communication plan needs to look like. But I think, I do agree 100% Michael with this idea that there needs to be a strategic, focused plan for communication, not sort of one-off approach. So I think Mike's going to play a big role in that, and I'm excited to see what happens.
All right. Thank you, guys. The board also had one of its meetings with the Pinkerton Academy Board of Trustees this week. If you're not familiar, the contract with Pinkerton Academy calls for three meetings each year between the trustees and the school boards of the sending towns. I wasn't able to attend this last one, but Jen, did you have any update from that meeting?
Yeah, several of us were there on a very rainy night. One of the highlights of that meeting tends to be that the culinary students put on a nice warm meal, and unfortunately, that didn't happen this past time. So that was a little bit of a disappointment, because they're so busy with all the activities that are happening this time of year, they were someplace else. And so we did get a pre-made sandwiches that they made that were also good, a couple salads. But the big takeaway, I think, from that meeting was that there's been a committee of the Pinkerton Board of Trustees about start times at Pinkerton. And they've been in sort of an information gathering period, polling the sending town communities around start times, with the idea that Pinkerton will be pushing back its start time so that it starts later. And with the information they've gathered, the Board of Trustees has kind of decided to put that idea on the back burner for the time being. The next meeting of that committee is going to be on September 9th. And my understanding is, the purpose of that meeting is going to be thinking really well about how we utilize transportation across all of these sending towns. There are six of them right now, including Derry. And then another update from that meeting was that Fremont has signed on to be a sending town for the '26-'27 school year, so they will also be another sending town. So there's a lot of discussion around how we use transportation and bringing maybe a first student onboard to really think about developing a consortium, so that we're not duplicating efforts across all these towns that are sending students to Pinkerton. Those are the two big updates.
I would also like to highlight that I got to meet Apollo, the therapy dog. There are three therapy dogs at Pinkerton now, and Apollo is the newest member. It's a little golden lab, I believe. And the handler for Apollo came and did a presentation regarding how they do the training, how they do the choosing, bringing them, and what they're there for. And I know typically, we tend to think of medical service therapy dogs for disabilities or diabetes or anything like that. And he just went on to, excuse me, explain how the therapy dogs are basically just there to facilitate conversation, to bring down anxiety levels, to walk around campus and get people to open up and talk about their own pets at home, to kind of just bring down the mood. And when there are instances, say, a death of a staff member or something that happens on the campus, that therapy dogs are there to, well, to provide therapy. So it was just, and of course, you know, getting to pet a puppy was pretty much the highlight of the evening. Very well behaved. So that's, that was my takeaway, on top of what Jen said.
All right. Thank you, guys. Next up will be FYIs. There was a student count from Pinkerton. I don't know if anyone had any questions about that. I wanted to acknowledge a few arts events that took place over the last couple of weeks. First, the musical Finding Nemo that was put on by West Running Brook. I know many of you guys had the opportunity to attend one of the shows. I hope you were as blown away by the talent and poise of our 5th and 6th graders, especially when you consider that all of these students were in elementary school last year, and this is the first year any of them have had the chance to participate in a production at school. You know, usually, there's, you know, an upper grade that's done it and kind of guides the lower grades that come in, you know. This was the first time any of these kids had had the opportunity to do a show at school, so it was really impressive. You know, Mrs. Thomas, Mr. Gore, Ms. LaFleur, they should all be so proud of the show they put together, and, you know, I'm looking forward to see what they do next year. The support from the community was huge. The gym at Hood was packed both nights, you know, they had to put out extra chairs on Friday. So thank you to everyone that came out to support the kids. If you've been to one of these shows before, if you've gone to the last show, the directors will usually come up on stage, and they'll thank everybody involved in the production. So if you were there Saturday, you may have noticed that the lights went up, and everybody started leaving, and Mrs. Thomas never got up to the stage to give her thank yous. And I saw her right after the show, and she was pretty sad about it. So I told her, well, it's not the same, you know, they had a few more people there on Saturday night than we have here with us tonight. But I told her I would deliver her thank yous for her tonight. So first and foremost, she wanted to thank all of the parents for all of the time and effort they put in. The production team, Kim DeFeo, Mark Beland, Gianna Andrew, they put in countless hours of work. And to Jennifer Charla and her student crew from Gilbert H. Hood. If you're not aware, the two drama clubs, you know, formerly If you're not aware, the two drama clubs, you know, formerly each middle school, had their own drama clubs, the Stage Bears here at West Running Brook and the Keynotes at Hood, and they've merged into one club called The Stage Notes. So even though they, you know, continue to put on their own shows, you know, the drama clubs, they'll continue to support each other throughout the four years that they're in the two schools, with the same core group of teachers and the same core group of parents. So, you know, it's a pretty cool model that they've put together. And of course, I have to thank Mrs. Thomas herself and Mr. Gore and Ms. LaFleur for all the time, effort, and dedication they put into producing what was a really amazing show that they should be proud of and their students should be proud of. I also wanted to congratulate all of our bands and choruses throughout the district for their spring concerts. I think at this point, every school except for East Derry has had their concerts. I was able to go over to Grinnell, West Running Brook, and Hood, and I mean, it's, I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see some of these bands and choruses, especially at the intermediate and middle school level, but it's really amazing to see the level of musical talent we have in this town at all the schools. So congratulations to all of our music students, all of our music educators, on a successful year. Anybody else have any other updates?
I have a quick, quick update. The last meeting, we talked briefly about Pinkerton's senior walkthroughs at elementary schools and how it had kind of been an organic thing, which made it sometimes hard to get the word out because it was sort of students talking to administrators, and so I met with principals and assistant principals over the last two weeks that, since we've had that conversation, to try to get everybody to give me information about what they're doing at their building, and then I can share that information out with Pinkerton Academy. So two of the four, I know I said one earlier, but a second one, get back to me. Two of the four schools, I've got dates and times that they've started to publicize. Waiting for the other two schools, I'm sure I'll hear back from them within a day or two. Since we also reached out to Pinkerton Academy Administration, I talked with Michael Perez, who's the dean of students, who connected me with the class officers. Anthony probably knows some of these people, but, so we're going to be using those students in the leadership group at Pinkerton to help spread the word so that these Pinkerton students know that if they want to go visit South Range Elementary School, it's on June 9th at 2:00 PM, which is a real date and time, but we'll put it all out. That one is easy because I think they actually had the ball rolling before we even mentioned it at the, at the meeting. So stay tuned, more to come, but we haven't, we're still working on it.
So will you make, like, once you get all the dates in, can, will you make an official post on the, like, the Derry Cooperative School District website or Facebook or something like that so that, because I know that the, you know, students are only so many kids can talk to them and get.
Yeah, I was just smiling because the guy who will make that post gave me the thumbs up, basically saying that he could do that. So yeah, once we do, we'll make sure we publicize that out. I know there's a lot of word of mouth, but we also want to make sure that for those people that don't know who to ask, there's a place to go.
I think, I think parents might want to know more than the kids do. So if the parents are on the page, then at least they'll know, and then they'll push their kids in that direction.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. If no one has any further updates, our future meeting schedule, we'll be meeting again this Thursday, May 29th, for the board's annual goal-setting workshop. That'll be the first meeting to include our incoming superintendent, Mr. Flynn. That's going to be at 5:00 PM in the Gilbert H. Hood library. Our next regular board meeting will be on Tuesday, June 10th, at 6:30 PM back at the municipal center. With that, if no one has anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Jen.
Second.
Second by Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Good night, everybody.